Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Franklin Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, October ninth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, meeting as that properly posted. We have a roll call, please. This is Larry.
Yes, Dr. Here, here. Mrs. Wierzki, here. This is Wierzki, here. Dr. Khan?
Here.
This is Yang.
Here.
This is Ray.
Here.
You're all present.
Thank you. Can you stand for the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal in law with liberty and justice for all. And I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Second, motion was made by Mrs. Wierzki, seconded by Dr. Khan, all in favor. I oppose motion carries. Thank you. W A S B Honorable Recognition, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Herman, please.
You want to kick it off here?
Yeah.
Okay.
First off, uh, thank you. Um, this is always kind of a great night every year. It kinda is a great time to kind of recognize some of our business partners, and we have three great business partners here this evening. So, um, just wanted to kind of say thank you to the board and to the district for kind of supporting this as we kind of work through the community and you'll kind of meet some great people and get a chance to kind of hear from one of them. And one of them is a former Franklin alum, so that'll be kind of great to hear from as well.
If I could have Katie Schneider stand up first. Uh, Katie is from Innovative Health. Uh, for any of you that are into working out, um, Innovative has been a really nice partner for us for a couple of different pathways. Um, some of our students have recently, uh, gone into childcare because their long-term goal is to get in maybe elementary education or childcare. Um, they have an opportunity to do that. There's a facilities maintenance pathway where students actually work within the building, and then there's also professional sales. Um, uh, the opportunity to go over there and actually make money and, and, and actually try it on for size to find out, do I even really want to do this profession long-term? Do I see myself in this doing well? And this is something I'm actually good at. Um, is, is really nice to do, and it's right here in Franklin. So, uh, Innovative has been a part of our health, uh, part of our, uh, hiring events as well. Um, they've been, uh, been there every year, uh, for the last couple of years. Um, they have, of course, they bring Franklin students too, which is really nice because then they, you know, kids recruit their kids really well. Um, so, uh, first off, we'd like to, um, uh, just say thank you to Katie Schneider.
Uh, pictures now or multiply until it's all?
Okay. All right, the next three. Uh, Milestone Plumbing. Uh, Milestone is a plumbing company that actually hired one of our students. Uh, Evan, while he was a senior, he was a, in our youth apprenticeship program for plumbing. He has, uh, been, uh, able to stay on, and they have sponsored him in a state-sponsored registered apprenticeship, uh, for plumbing. So, uh, not only did he get an experience while he was in high school, but now he's actually started his career with them. Um, Scott on the left has been at our hiring events, has been at our, um, Trades Day, uh, which is a consortium-wide thing where we have kids engage with students. Um, you know, also been at our, um, signing events. So, at the end of the school year when a student is electing, going into an apprenticeship, you know, they've signed like they're going to play a college sport, but they're signing on to be an apprentice. So, uh, Scott has been instrumental in that. Um, Jess Candazero is on the right. Um, she is a past president of Neri, which is a, the remodelers, uh, organization within Milwaukee. Um, not only that, she's just a fantastic person. Um, she's a person that when she engages with our students, um, right away they have like instant trust. It's really nice to see at our hiring events or our Trades Day type things when girls have a chance to actually see themselves in a, uh, in a tradesperson that's not a man, you know, or not a man that has gray hair like me, you know, which there's a lot of, you know, uh, to see themselves, eh, yeah, you know, this person did it, and, uh, she's in plumbing, you know, uh, and she's not in the office, you know? She owns the company. So, she's an entrepreneur. She's also a master plumber. Um, so having, um, that connection is fantastic. Um, so I'd like to recognize them as well.
Lastly, we have, um, Mike Davis.
You would.
Stand up. Um, if you were at the breakfast for the end of the year, Mike spoke there, did a great job. Um, I first got to know Mike in this role. Um, I think it was the Trades event that we had in twenty twenty-three of the spring. And he came and he brought a table there, and it was kind of funny because then by the next year, you kind of learned everything to kind of get. And it was kind of cool to see him evolve as like a business owner too throughout the process. It's like, okay, now, uh, next year I'll see what he also brings to this event too. He'll probably have like some hands-on like demonstrations and some other things. But he's hired quite a few of our kids over the years, and they've had tremendous success with him. And I know of at least a couple that have kind of stayed on full-time. He just had another student that signed as a youth apprenticeship, um, for landscaping this, uh, last past week, so that's kind of really great. And I think he will kind of attest to his management and leadership has really evolved because of it. Um, because when he first started, a lot of the people here managing were older than him. And now he's managing people that are a little bit younger, and it's kind of changed his perspective and helped him grow probably as an individual and a, and a business owner. And he's, um, a Franklin alum, and overall just great guy that is a great influence and role model for our students to be around. So, thank you, Mike, and I think maybe if you had a few words you wanted to mention.
Yeah, um, thank you, guys. It's an honor to be here. You guys hear me? All right. Um, it's an honor to be here. Um, it's weird being in this position because I was a, was a Franklin student. I never thought I'd be here. I actually went to school to be a pharmacist, and now I own a small business in the area, but, um, i- it's an honor to be able to work with these guys. Um, I was actually a youth apprentice when I was in school, but not for the trades. Um, I was actually going to be a pharmacist. I, I had an internship at Walgreens that Franklin helped me set up. Um, and I was actually one of those kids that kind of bounced between the upstairs and the downstairs of Franklin at the time between the trade classes and the, you know, the math and sciences. And, uh, I never thought I would actually be here until, till it happened. Um, but being able to come back into the community, I live just south of Franklin now. Just recently I moved, but a lot of my family still lives there. I'm there every week. A lot of our jobs are there. Um, being able to work with these kids because they are our future, um, is, has been huge. Um, and it goes beyond just, you know, Franklin. It goes to all of the schools in the area. Um, we're actually doing a huge thing right now for, uh, Build My Future. I'm a part of a few different builders organizations, and we've partnered with, uh, Build My Future. We have, I think Franklin's, some of the Franklin schools are coming tomorrow. Um, to it, it's a two-day event at, uh, Racine County Fairgrounds where I think we have like four thousand kids coming over the course of two days, and they get hands-on experience, working with, uh, getting to touch and feel, uh, different trades tools, C-equipment, C-excavators, and sky lifts. I know We Energies is there, and they have a ton of their big equipment despite the crazy stuff that's going on down south. They were able to free some stuff up. So, um, being able to work with these kids has been a true honor, and, uh, I hope that you guys can keep this going in the community, and, and I know my company will continue to hire, and, and we need them in order to, to grow and serve the community. Um, not everyone stays. Some find out that they love it, some that they don't, and some it opens up a different avenue to go work for a, a union-based job or, you know, take their equipment skills and, and move to maybe something even bigger and better than my company. So, I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you guys tonight, and thank you for what you've done for my childhood and, and the future, um, professionals to come out of Franklin. Thank you.
Thank you.
We could have everybody come on up for some pictures.
True. Can you, my club friend?
Sure.
Good work, man.
You did. Yeah, good to see you.
Nice to meet you, man.
Nice to meet you, too.
Good night, thank you.
Thanks.
Nice to meet you, too. You reach out if I can help.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. It's exciting for everybody. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. See you next year. All right, thank you, everyone. Uh, nobody signed up for community comment, so. Does anybody want to comment? Does anybody want community, community comment?
At the end of the month, I'll say.
Close community comment. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Uh, motion was made by Mrs. Yang, seconded by Mrs. Wierzki, just because Mrs. Wierzki handed the wire. Uh, all in favor? I oppose motion carries. Thank you. School Board calendar, uh, key communicators meeting is, uh, next Wednesday, the sixteenth, at Franklin High School at five, and regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, October thirtieth, um, at six at the E C C, and also November thirteenth at the E C C, also at six. District Administrator, update, Mr. Ben, please.
All right, good evening. Uh, it was great to see Innovative Fitness, Davis Land State Construction, and Miles of fulfillment of us tonight. Uh, so we're thankful for those partnerships. Um, and to see them throughout the good years supporting our students and offering more opportunities. Uh, it's exciting that Brad with us this evening. I bet he's positioned, is finishing anytime soon. We have a couple of months left, but this is his last presentation to the board. So, thanks for being with us, Brad, and thanks for all the service you give into the district. I know you worked here on the official announcement, so it's nice to have you on with us tonight. Thank you for that. Um, today we're gonna have a presentation, a couple presentations, but one is on the budget. So, Amy will be presenting on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget and tax levy for our first read coming back around on October thirtieth. Uh, so this is the fifth time the boards had a look at this budget since its initial preliminary viewing in January. Uh, so we finalize our third Friday compound. We are waiting on the final budgetary piece, the equalization aid that comes from the Department of Public Construction, October fifteenth, so one of that finalized by October back on the thirtieth. Uh, when we look at the budget, there's obviously a lot of detail to it, but a few things that stood out to me this year before we did it in deeper dive later, uh, is the Work at the Better Place to Work Committee, uh, and just sharing the gratitude to the staff that dedicated their time and being on the committee and sharing integration back with their building. Um, it did get us to the point where we could put in a professional compensation model, um, that has not proven to retain and attract employees. We continue to do work there, but I've seen some positive pieces of it. Uh, when we presented to our employee groups, specifically our professional educators last May, before the school year was out, we were saying it would be at four point one-two percent, uh, before CPI, uh, being able to come off the mound and finalize budget. We could say that that's, it would be at four point eight-seven percent, so an increase of one point seven-five, um, for that professional educator group, four point one-two for all of our other groups. Uh, that's exciting for us. Last year, our budget, you'll recall, we built in to increase, um, the pay for our cost category of aid in the buildings. Um, so continuing to work at ensuring we're competitive in our market for the workforce, knowing that compensation is not the only thing that that is. We did this thing that came through from our Better Place to Work task force, and we appreciate the years you gave voice on that, um, and do that work. That committee will continue this year, um, and is gonna look at some of the compensation model for our support staff groups. Um, so Laura and Amy have done a nice job of getting a bigger group of people to represent a variety of our support staff so that they can start to look at that. We just had a few on the committee last year and needed to get more voice there. Uh, voice is an important part of being engaged. We'll also be looking at, uh, what does insurance look like, uh, what kind of, you know, value do we have in our insurance, just some of the things that we're looking at, um, where are some areas that we'll challenge this year, keeping accurate forward. And then also, we want to be a part of developing our next calendar. So, then the first meeting, um, last week, I think last week and this week with the two groups, um, have started to put together some of those details for the calendar, which Laura will be bringing forward, um, in November. So, a few fun things I would say are, uh, celebrations and steps in the right direction that have come out of the last year's work and helped project us into this next budget cycle. Um, upcoming events that we have for the community, specifically being the last one prior to referendum, to be able to inform our community so they can go to the polls and make a decision. Um, this Saturday is the first of three listening sessions. Uh, it's the Ed Franklin High School in the library. Uh, we'll shift to the library for that one at noon. Um, so again, just information about what the one hundred forty-five million dollar referendum needs, uh, what facilities it's looking at, um, and what updates. And there will be a tour following that. Next Wednesday is our first of three key communicator, uh, meetings of the year. So, that's a group that started a couple dozen, we've grown it past seventy-five now. Uh, next week, we're using that as an opportunity to celebrate support we've had, um, past several items, looking at how that's helped grow the Sabre Center, which will be, which is where we'll be meeting. Uh, we're gonna hear from some voices of educators in our district, uh, hear from the marching band at one of their last practices right before their state competition. Um, and then following that one, we'll also have an optional tour. We've invited key communicators who are guests to that meeting that they want to be informed or just hear the band and hear some voices from our educators in the Sabre Center, uh, as we continue to try and communicate further all of the opportunities we have to be in the arts and the Sabre Center. Uh, and there will be optional tour following that for anybody that in the community or key communicators that wants to join us. At your seat, you have a draft of that agenda for the meeting, um, next week, to have an idea of what that looks like. We'll send that out to our team, uh, key communicator team, uh, early next week. And then Friday, October twenty-fifth, at ten a.m. is a final listening session, um, an optional tour at the high school that will be in the Sabre Center also. Uh, we do not have students that day, so, uh, time that we can offer during the day, but we don't have to worry about having visitors in the building, schools, with that, sorry, in the school session. The students, but, uh, so there's a few updates under the shirt, any questions?
All right, thank you. Report to presentations and other board business, Wisconsin School Board recognition. Mr. Ben, please.
All right, so thank you to all of our board members with us tonight. This is the one week that is publicly recognized for our school boards, but obviously I thank our community, myself and our team for sure. Appreciate the service you give to our community, the time that you're present, and then the opportunity to work with a couple of boards and who are the most present and community that I've ever seen, and I really appreciate that. It's very attractive for our community. They're aware of what's going on in the buildings. Appreciate that you're meeting with our leaders, your department PTOs, you know, just present and available, um, in understanding what we do for our students every day and our families. I asked Charlie to pull a little bit of the data for us. So, in winning in terms of service, I mean, that's, that's already, it's Debbie. I'm here at eighth term, right? I believe it is. So, just over twenty-one years. Um, so I think that's amazing. I've been on a lot of time for those, over twenty-one years. Uh, right behind Adam and Noe is sixteen, so I believe that would make it your sixth term. And then we have a number of us in, and that's me, but others in terms of Mike, uh, just over five years. Um, and Angie and Ann, just over three years, and Mary just over a couple of years.
Black suit is just over.
Oh, black suit is over three years. Thank you. The grand total being over fifty-six years of board commitment at the table, um, which I think says a lot to be committed to our, moving in our schools. Um, so, a bunch of things, as a token of appreciation, uh, and also some apparel and apparel for schools that you can wear when you're at all of the events. So, appreciate very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for all you do. Um, all right, the Community and Recreation Department report, Mr. Anderson, please.
Brought my fan. First of all, thank you for having me here one last time. Um, I'm here to talk about the annual report, uh, kind of give you the highlights of the year for the rec department and answer any questions. Um, overall, it was a good year for the department. Um, we grew, um, in participation by four and a half percent. Most of that was adult fitness. Our classes are really popular. When the new building opens, we'll be able to accommodate the waiting lists that we currently have for most of those classes. Our before-and-after-school program, the kids' club, numbers went down, um, this last year. And really, the reason why was the previous year, if you remember, there was the busing issues. So, a lot of people signed up for kids' club, not knowing if they had transportation. So, those, that year was, those numbers were really overinflated. Uh, the numbers this last year really were in line with the previous years. Facility usage has gone up, uh, this last year by almost thirty-six hundred hours. The majority of that is rentals, um, for the turf spaces at the high school and the elementary schools. Um, a lot of the club teams are using the elementary schools for green space. Um, Forest Park hosted summer school. That continued to grow. And then the other thing is, a lot of the classroom, uh, multipurpose type areas are, uh, being booked out at the elementary schools for things. Um, gyms are still at a hundred percent capacity. That's just a given. Um, the other thing that we're looking at is in the link for the rec building, there was a mock schedule for different types of programs that are gonna happen in that facility. Please know that that's very fluid. Um, the categories in there are what we're striving to increase. That was the senior citizen program, the younger preschool parent-type programs, um, and then accommodating waiting lists. So, you can see some of the programs that are on there right now, um, are things that we've either had in the past or are being offered in neighboring communities. We've made contact with a lot of partners already that are interested in doing that. We'll start locking those in once the building gets closer being built. Um, and then the other thing that I wanted to talk about is, uh, policy thirty-six thirty. You can see which is the facility usage portion of it. Fund eighty is kind of a two-part levy. One is for recreation services. The other part of that levy is for community access. Um, a portion of that levy pays for three custodians and a groundskeeper. That spreadsheet that you see is pretty inclusive of the groups that are supported by that. Um, some pay rent if they use fields like youth football, which is all Franklin kids. And then you can see some that are using facilities for free. That still takes custodial setup, check-in, and things like that. Those salaries are covered under the fund eighty levy, just so you understand the makeup of what that levy is. All of that money doesn't directly come into the Recreation Department for programming. It also supports the community access that people are using for all seven buildings. So, with that, I would open it up for questions. The numbers are, uh, in all of the enrollment are any time a person takes a program. So, if you sign up for a yoga class, it's that yoga class times ten people.
And then there's a couple sessions.
Right, each, yeah, each session would be a new, a new program, correct?
It's not new people.
Pardon me?
It's not new people at all.
Some could be.
Because I know some of the kids club, you know, the ego would count for new kids, but not for that.
Well, the kids' club actually, right, is the number of kids that participate. Those are, those are parents that have those, those number of kids that set a schedule weekly. Well, it's, it's the family. So, each kid would represent a number in that number, and they set a schedule. So, it's, it's basically the same as it would be for yoga.
Um, you also mentioned that the, um, part of increasing hours, uh, summer school, that's middle school. So, I thought you had a belief in you're accounting for your own program and your own building?
Well, summer school isn't a rec program. Um, basically, when you look at facility usage, it's anything outside the normal school day. So, our before-school programs account, our after-school, if there's chess immediately after school, Boy Scouts after school, those are the numbers that are accommodated.
So, the first of all is in the Forest Park public facility.
Correct.
Oh, I just want to thank you, um, for your years of service and for your foresight and, um, felt in the many programs that you have and the care that you took in enjoying the program. It makes a difference to a lot of people in the community, and I appreciate you.
Thank you. We've had, I've had a great staff all through my career, so, I mean, a lot of that goes to them too.
On page six, why do you say not a lot going on in, in Franklin, uh, in the city, open state care, sort of, in the summer?
Um, I guess, really, when you look at the summer portion of it, you've got kids involved in Little League through, you know, baseball stuff through their travel teams, though they have practice facilities. Any of the baseball stuff with the high school being wide open, um, the majority of any of the travel teams are using the high school baseball and softball field. Softball field can accommodate, obviously, girls softball, but it's perfect for twelve and under, for hardball. Um, and then you, you look at the football field for lacrosse and everything else. So, um, it's, it's really where they choose to practice. Ben Franklin was used a long time ago, a lot by soccer, um, for Croatia, Croatian Polonia. And remember, there's not a lot of equipment out there either. There's no soccer goals that are sitting in the green space. It's wide open, where if you look at, uh, Robinwood at St. Martin's Park, there's, there's goals out there. Currently, there's some at, uh, Robinwood in the front area. Um, so if there's not equipment, it's, it's hard for them to actually practice at it.
If anybody else has any questions, comments? Yeah, please.
I think there's a statement in the beginning that, even though we're adding those buildings, new buildings, it's still not going to really make a weekend important, what we need.
Yeah, it, it was.
Why was that really still about?
The, the majority of the need within the school district is for your gymnasium space. Um, that facility that's gonna be built is not a gymnasium. So, the, the classes that are gonna happen there are, are those things that you're, that we're reporting now that you're seeing groups use, your multipurpose rooms, your larger areas, your libraries. Those types of classes that we're running out of there are gonna go into that new building and be able to accommodate that plus waiting lists. So, when you look at that, it's gonna give you a little bit of relief in those smaller classroom, larger meeting room areas, but it's still not gonna do anything for the eighteen roughly gyms that are needed in the school district to accommodate the growing feeder teams and the growing community. Um, the community, really, even your Croatia, your Polonias and people like that are still contacting us even more now because they've kind of outgrown their parks as to what spaces are available. The Rock just reserved the high school baseball field this Saturday for three games. I mean, it's an ongoing process where they know that the, the, the school district has the facilities. They know the school district is willing to rent them, um, and they're top-notch facilities.
Thank you. Anybody else? Brad, thanks a lot.
Thank you, guys.
Incredible, the talent of them, and we, we appreciate all of your stuff.
Appreciate your support. Thank you.
Picture? Picture?
Brad, come on up.
I'd love it.
They just will just take one from right over, so.
All right, twenty-four, twenty-five budget and tax levy, uh, first three, please.
Yep, so tonight before you, what you see is, uh, fifth or sixth iteration of the budgets are all the way back from January of twenty-four, moving this way forward. Uh, a couple of things that have really solidified itself since, um, April one, we have property value in the district that came on October first, um, with an admission, uh, increase of five point sixty percent. Uh, we have third Friday count, which I did make a mistake on the initial report, although the graphs inside of the document are correct. But we are, uh, decreased by twenty full-time equivalents on a three-year average. So, we're down about eighty some kids, uh, this particular year alone. And then full-time equivalents really focus on resident students. Um, so, students who are in our seats, students who live within the regular public school, probably would have public school also, uh, make up our resident count. Um, just a couple of the real highlights that have changed since, really, any other time that we saw the budget, but most recently the annual meeting. Um, number one is, um, Emily alluded to, um, all employees are four point one-two percent except for professional educators. So, a professional educator would be a teacher, school psychologist, school counselor, uh, you were mentioning as coach. Um, moving to four point eight-seven, that's an aggregate number, as a reminder. Um, so four point eight-seven percent, so we were able to add in, you know, approximately a hundred eighty thousand dollars into that pool, which equates to an additional point seven-five percent. Um, so the numbers you see inside of this document reflect that. Uh, they reflect the healthcare change that was made in April, um, so that's all updated in here as well. Um, and many things really did stay the same since we have seen them in August. Uh, Department budgets minus, um, a couple of dollars that went to teaching and learning for some additional, um, items they need, and about twenty thousand dollars on buildings and grounds, while for some additional items that they need, like physical art items. Um, the addition of a, uh, yellow bus that has a wheelchair lift, you'll see Adam in here. Um, and I know, Mary, you have asked. And I know Mary, you have asked in, I believe it was July, why our banking interest was significantly lower than anticipated. I remember telling you at that time that we know it's probably going to be higher than that, but those are dollars, we can't bank that until that little period of time. Interest rates will go, which we've already seen from five sort of basis points, a 50 basis points cut. But we did increase that for this particular budget by about $113,000, which equates exactly to the cost of the wheelchair bus because we know we'll make $763,000 or whatever happens to be on interest, an additional $113,000. So we knew we were going to buy the bus, we already had to sign contracts for it, so we had to then add in the additional interest revenue. The remaining additional interest revenue, should we earn over that, we'll have building projects to work to do with that, right? We have $96 million worth of building projects that we're trying to figure out. So $300,000 will help, but certainly like maybe change in that particular bucket. The rest I just pretty much say, as we have seen at the end of meeting and probably in the chat, actually. So I'll, I'll put another question. Oh, I, one more piece I should add. You will see two levies tonight, and we will ask you to approve two levies in October. One is a successful referendum levy, so that's only the debt portion from '29. One is a non-successful referendum levy, again, '29. So 10 vouchers, recreation, all of those pieces will stay the same, but we will see that dual levy. And should the referendum be approved, we will have an October payment, which is October '25, which is where that comes in for needing that levy approved. Now, if the boarders do not approve it, then we just revert back to the non-successful referendum portion of that. So the language of the approval will state the budget based upon the other fifth election that you have seen two levies on. Should it be approved, here's this levy on, should it not be approved, here's this levy on.
So if it's first version, it's an additional $8.4 million to pay back the referendum. So would the second version, version B, abduction of the 8.4 million?
So at this point, I'm planning to bring the reasons for it, as part of that. Should we not approve a referendum, continue chopping down our debt?
But that is a not required, it's not obligated, it's discretionary.
Correct.
So where, I think our boarders are approving, they're voting on the 8.4 million.
Correct.
That is what's required to pay back $145 million.
They're voting on $145 million. We talked about this before, boarders do not approve payment schedules, they approve debt, they approve total loans. So they'll per the $145 million, not how it's prepared.
But we're telling them how it's going to be paid as part of that information you're sharing with them in order for them to make decisions regarding the affordability of that debt.
We're telling them, shouldn't they see it at 82 cents and then the finance at 82 cents?
Well, I think it does. I think the, the seasons, as you said, is totally discretionary, not obligated. It's essentially a line, not a need. Is that correct?
That, that's your, that's your...
I'm sorry, I'm asking...
Yeah, that, that's a daily question, so I, I will tell you, we'll bring forth the reasons.
What is a line, what is not a need?
Again, I'm not going to say that it's one or the other, that's... But I will tell you, we will bring it forth. Approval, the board can say no, they can decrease it, they can add to it, eliminate it altogether.
But for taxpayers, they will communicate that when they, correct, correct, you know, their information is what's been cost them, is it not? They're not just looking at $145 million, they need to know what that means to them and their tax debt.
You're correct.
In order to pay back $145 million requires a payment minimally of 8 million dollars. And the schedule you shared with me goes up to 14.6 million later in the issue. So the issue is the impact is 8.4 million. It's not 8.4 million minus the seasons, it's 8.4 million.
So if the referendum is successful, we're $8 million, if it's not, we're the reasons for it.
And why do we need to remove the season?
The quicker we can get rid of debt, the better off we are.
On page 18, you talked about the scoreboard and the fact that it is being fundraised to pay for. I'm just curious where we can anticipate that sort of repayment for how we're sort of fronting the cost for that being reflected in later budgets?
Yep, so we are in our first year, so our first payments were July. We'll see our second payments of year one in January. So four years from January of 2025, so in January of 2029, we should have that for entirely paid for. Those boards lasted, worked for 15 to 20 years, minus some normal current care and care but... So over the course of the next 10 years following 2029, those dollars should be coming in for us to choose whatever we want to do.
Okay, they're not going to steer me up here in any specific line item or...
It doesn't appear as a revenue under 260, trying to figure exactly where that falls in there. Sorry, 270. So if you go to page 15, it'll fall under 270. So those are really missions, field trips. Some of that is rent, so we have rent. We have three entities with our, using our fiber. So the city of Greenfield, school district, or sorry, city of Greendale, school district of Greendale, school district of Oak Creek Franklin. So they have 25-year use of those fiber payments, although only four years are paid for, but they're paying for the upfront for first four-year payments. So Greendale, both the city and the school district are right here at the end, so we won't see as much revenue there. So essentially, our revenue from the scoreboard is taken over for those particular pieces.
Just, it's kind of, I don't love that something that we weren't supposed to have to see at all affecting our overall budget is essentially, because what would that money be being used for this year about a week? Do you understand?
Yep, so 100%. So really, that's using, I don't necessarily budget to tie down for it because I, it really should go towards either athletics, your market, maybe new turf, something along those lines. So not all of it is budgeted in there, and we'll slide that into the appropriate account. But some of it is accounted for, some of it helps us operate and develop, certainly not all. But we're thus able to entirely pay for the scoreboard in the last 20 years. Like, in theory, we've already recruited enough money to pay for that. Not to sponsorships, but we have excess funds at the end of the year that we're able to account for that and still be less flat at the year end.
Okay.
And what's that represented in the...
Was that in 18?
18, I believe she said. So you would see it in the 23 to 24 actual numbers.
I think we're still adding the 4 million to the seasons. And I don't know, maybe you just swap that to a different topic.
I thought we were all supposed to be answering those questions.
So I had a question, but I don't think we remembered that question. So it's not required that 4 million dollars to the season.
What, what more did we have to add? Did somebody else even comment about the seasons? I, I love it.
Yes, okay. So I just want board members to think about the, the seasons. And it's not, it's not obligated, there was no requirement. And so it's a line, it's not a need, number one. And number two, we hear about savings associated with the seasons, when as you can clearly see, that savings requires 4 million dollars on our tax credit card during that saving, which does not appear until, or appeared 13 years. I think at this point in time in this economy, that is better, it should be with a... And furthermore, more importantly, when they're voting on that $145 million, it should be either 8 up, 8 million more, or 8 million less. Simple. That's not hard to understand. And we're not doing that. We're going to say, well, it'll be 8 million if they say yes, but we're only going to go down to 4 million if they say no. It's not right, it's not the right math we should be looking at. And I want that disclosed. I think it needs to be disclosed to people making their decisions. I don't think it's...
There is nothing that is not disclosed.
You can share the schedule, which clearly shows in year one, we had a rate of 1.8 and it goes to 2.62. Year two, and all through the remaining years, the difference shows is 2.88 compared to 2.62.
So it is disclosed.
No one has seen it. Nobody has seen it. You just picked one line out of it. You didn't look at, every year after that, it's doubled, you can't use double only because of this to season. The seasons is not an ongoing obligation. It's not an ongoing obligation. It's not a repayment schedule, it's a decision you make every year. So correctly, they do not assume it's going forward. Therefore, the impact is greater through the whole rest of the payment schedule. It's double than what it was. And I think it's disingenuous and not full disclosure to say that to taxpayers that a no is less 8.8 million, a yes is 8 million more. And I want board members to think about that because I would be making, and I hope that you allow some discussion to make that happen when we vote on this. And I'm not even sure why we need to include this at this time. This payment's not due to October of 2025. We don't need to, why do we need, we've never done this before. We've been part of referendums before, right Debbie? We've never had an either-or budget before us, never.
So when we approve the 2024, 2024, '25 budget, we're approving the 20, calendar year '25 tax payments. So payments made in April and October. Because this bond issuance is set up to have an October payment. It has to be included in the 2024, '25 tax levy in order to have those funds for calendar year 2025.
We have a preliminary budget that we approve in June.
Is, is it poss, is it possible that it's because the, is it possible because that other referendums were approved in April rather than, April election rather than November election?
I can't answer that question.
I can't either.
The answer is really determined on when you, when you anticipate paying the dollars back. We have it set up to start paying in October of '25.
Which goes back to when you anticipate on making the borrowing. Why do we have to borrow it? Yeah, I don't know, when do you expect to borrow this?
At some point in the spring, dependent on the draw schedule, which will get more fleshed out.
We're not going to spend $145 million next year. It can be, it can be delayed one month. It can be easily delayed one month.
We are still anticipating an October payment.
Furthermore, the, the middle school was built with two issues because it takes a long time to build. Why do we hold this debt, all of it, at the beginning? Why don't you split it in half and do one and then the other?
It's a great question. We've done that evaluation. In order to borrow it at one lump sum, we will make approximately $4 million more in interest to use towards other projects. So in evaluating that overall, it seemed that that was the logical choice. It will cost us about $1 million of interest, but we net $3 million towards projects in order to do that. So that was evaluated.
What about the rules related to, I'm not remembering the technical term.
Arbitrage, it's arbitrage.
Arbitrage, yeah. Those rules about that, you're not borrowing money just to make money.
You're correct. That $9 million is inclusive of arbitrage.
So we are going to be paying arbitrage on that.
The goal is not to.
But the estimate you told me includes arbitrage.
The estimate is estimating 3.5% for the life of the borrowing and earning 3.5%. The goal is to work with our financial advisor or whichever firm we decide to work with on arbitrage. Arbitrage is very much like income tax. There are ways around paying the amount of income tax you're supposed to pay. So some of that is going out and investing in tax-exempt securities, which do not fall under arbitrage whatsoever. So tax-exempt securities come from the federal government, and you don't have to pay arbitrage on them. There's also certain benchmarks that you meet in terms of spending. So 10% within the first six months. There is a five-year exemption that we're going to apply for.
And we're using exemption?
Well, we know our project's going to take four years, so arbitrage requires payment of 100% of your dollars within two years. So it would be silly for us not to apply for the five-year exemption, knowing our project is four years.
Or we split it in half and just borrow twice, which is what happened with the middle school. There are other options.
And I just explained that we will earn $4 million more interest and pay $1 million more, but net $3 million towards use of projects. To me, in my mind, that's a smart play.
It's a smart play of taxpayer money that's just kind of, nothing guaranteed, nothing's guaranteed. And, and your taxpayers are, I think they're being asked to approve a bar 145 to build this. It's like 145 to build this and this other little thing we got going on over here that's going to give us more money. It's very, not straightforward. It's not straightforward. It's not clear, it's not transparent, it's...
It, it is clear and transparent.
I had to ask these questions to find all this information, which concerns me when we're in an arbitrage situation.
Arbitrage simply means you've earned as much interest as you can possibly earn. That's what arbitrage means.
To me, arbitrage means that we're not supposed to be borrowing money to make money. It's supposed to be borrowing money to do projects.
We aren't borrowing money to make money, we're borrowing money to do projects. Unfortunately, or fortunately, interest rates are extremely high. That's why you're going to fall into an arbitrage situation. Six years ago, I was involved in a referendum that was successful, and you didn't worry about arbitrage whatsoever because the interest rate was 0.1%. Arbitrage wasn't even a concern. We just happened to be in an environment with high interest rates. So now it is something you have to be careful of. But again, if you refund money, arbitrage is simply refunding interest money to the federal government. So right now, it's about 3.5%. So anything you earn over 3.5%, if you miss certain benchmarks in spending, you repay to the federal government. Essentially, it's, you shouldn't earn more interest than you possibly can. So some of it has to go back. But ultimately, if you pay back arbitrage, if you go through the process, you've simply maximized the amount of earning you can on dollars, which allows you to do more with the dollars that you have.
The bigger issue is the defeasance. The $4 million, it's not obligated. And you're using it to reduce the impact of the 8 million, which is not, it's not, it's not transparent. It's not transparent.
Well, it comes to the board every year to get board approval, so I think that is transparent, and you can choose how you want to do that. It's using the interest to pay down that loan at a quicker rate. So it's not, not transparent because we're talking about it right now. We've talked about it multiple times a year since I've been on this, in the district.
We're talking about the impact of the 8 million of this new referendum.
Correct, I hear you, Linda.
What, this is the schedule that the public sees of what our debt is. When you compare that to the new one, that would be the impact of the referendum. That impact is $8 million. There is no defeasance on this schedule. This is a schedule the taxpayers agreed to or were implied that they were going to when they approved these other referendums. And this schedule is, it's, it's solid, it's steady, it never goes up. These are relatively low interest rates. Why would we deface it? Because you were setting up the $4 million for this referendum. We shouldn't have been doing that. And I'm asking that at least we can be forthright with our taxpayers and not include that in the impact of this next referendum. We're not being transparent.
Lynda, you...
Max Sud has a question.
Please, Max Sud.
You know, I think all of us have received our property assessment. And actually, I was talking to a few of my colleagues at work who live in Franklin area. And unfortunately, some people have received 30% increase in their property assessments, you know. Marafa coworker told me her land value, all of us jumped to four times, you know. So talking to the committee members, especially after October the 1st, when everybody received this surprised tax assessment, you know, appraisals. It is, um, definitely on the minds of the committee members that with such thirty percent increase in assessment, it's a big jump, unfortunately, you know. That's the way the market is. That's the way market is. Can't decline the market, you know. If the property is worth five hundred thousand, it's property is worth two hundred, five hundred thousand. It was maybe worth three hundred, but now it's five hundred. So, you know, you better live if you want to live in a five hundred thousand dollar home. It's good for you that you have that, uh, equity built up and all this stuff. But people who are living in the homes still have to calculate the taxes. And, um, so that's my only point, which I'm saying is that we need to be cognizant of the fact is that the property assessment have increased, which is a good thing. If you're thinking of equity, but at the same time, the person who's paying the taxes for that year, he will have to crunch the numbers to pay the tax for the property. Which will include, of course, you know, with the property assessment, anything we include, am I right? Like we said, one forty one dollars for five hundred thousand dollar home. So whatever we include will, uh, have that, uh, impact on the tax bill as such.
That's important to note, but again, our district only went up five point six two percent. So there have to be people offsetting that particular tax assessment in order to make that work.
Do we know how much of that five point six two percent was new construction versus increase in, in existing?
I don't have the exact percent, but it's roughly one and a half.
Not to make you jealous, but somehow my assessment went down. I don't know how. I'm, I think I'm the only one in the city.
No, I heard that from others today.
Yours is two million.
Three percent?
I don't know. It's crazy.
So I, Mike and I had a conversation about that yet. And, and in order to be at five point six two, somebody had to go up and someone had, because we know people went up, so someone had to go down or, or a whole bunch of people are staying pretty close to flat, like in order to make that work, so. Um, but again, I, I, the only data I have is five point six two percent and what happened to my house. I don't have it for anybody else.
Anybody, anybody else have questions? Comments? All right. Thank you, everyone. Uh, policies fifty four ten, use of physical force by staff. And sixty three twenty, open enrollment, first read. Uh, Mrs. Bennon, please.
All right. Um, there's memos that kind of outline what is changed in those minimal with the policy fifty four ten, use of physical force by staff. We're really just moving that to, uh, forty seven fifty one coding, uh, to be properly placed by label in our policy book and then some other minor changes. And then the fifty three twenty two, open enrollment, kind of bullet pointed a few of the changes in there. Again, a number change to put it, move it from instructional to students. Uh, but then language around denying non-resident applications for open enrollment, um, based on discipline pending or expulsions. Removing language that automatically gives an open seat to someone who's moved outside of the community. Um, and then speci, specified language around the alternative open enrollment applications, um, and what constitutes ability to accept or deny those. Um, any questions you have on either one of them, I can take.
Angie, please.
Um, can you talk to me a little bit more about what the reasoning was behind, um, removing the automatic open enrollment seat given to someone who moves out of the district? And how many students you think that that will affect?
So what that means is if somebody is living in the district and then they buy a house in Cudahy and they automatically would have got to stay before. Uh, we've looked at it in a variety of situations. I don't know that, I can't predict how many people it would affect, because I don't know who's planning to move out and still plan to attend here. It's typically not very many. Um, uh, so we've just said it's more fair to probably put that back in the pool of random selection of people that want to come into the district.
I was thinking it's worth, um, because you know, people sort of talk and they have these assumptions about how things work about open enrollment. It, it's, it's worth the public noting that we're considering making that change, because you know, moving out of the district is a huge decision for many people. And if the practice has been, you know, your kid could finish out their last year of high school in the district, if you move out of the district for that last year. That's something that people will want to take into consideration. I guess I'm, I'm not quite sure how I feel about it. Um, I, I will be asking people for feedback on that one. And if it's, and if there's not really a great reason for it, other than sort of a general feeling of fairness, I don't know. I wonder what other people think about that.
So I, I just want to add one thing about, so if you move out after eleventh grade and you don't live here in twelfth grade. Um, DPI tells you to provide that student with a tuition waiver. So they allow students to stay with them to finish out their senior year of high school.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Does that only apply to the senior year of high school? Doesn't?
You can tuition waiver.
You can tuition waiver pretty much any year you would like, if you choose to do that. Um, you can do a second year tuition waiver for a twelfth grade student. Um, you cannot do a, a second year tuition waiver, um, for grades underneath that, but then you.
The max are going to get on tuition waivers, two rounds, right? We've got a few of those forward. You've seen maybe three or four my time here. Where you approve it because they're going to pay tuition if things don't happen, right? So you're not going to make it past two of those. Sorry.
So yeah, not eleventh and twelfth grade maybe. Is that sort of the, do we know what the practice of neighboring districts is? Does it not matter? I don't know. I, I think the problem is.
The tuition waiver is.
The tuition.
Tuition waivers.
Yeah, everybody does the tuition waiver.
But just this.
I haven't had it in policy anywhere else that I've been that, or seen it with other superintendents I work with, where it's an automatic in if you move out.
Okay.
Hi, Miller. Anybody else have questions about these policies? All right, uh, school board liaison reports. Uh, does anybody have any board liaison reports?
Yep, I've, um, I, I attended the, um, Southwood Glen PTO meeting, PTA meeting, um, last week as their liaison. Um, lots of exciting events happening. We had this successful Lapping with the Lions event two, three Fridays ago. Um, and just, you know, other fun engagement things happening through the year. So I look forward to being able to volunteer with them. Good group.
I also got to see the Countrydale Cougar Chase, a little bit of it at least. Their walking, running fundraiser for their PTO. Anybody? Linda, please.
I did meet with Dr. Mo regarding, um, artificial intelligence. This was, uh, after the professional development day when teachers were given some information on what that might look like in terms of expectations or practices in the district, which is, uh, new. And at this point, it's not policy, but it's more along the lines of practice and what, uh, what tools are allowed and, um, and at this point, I believe you are taking that input, input from teachers and I've also provided some input. And, um, we'll see where that goes. So at this point, um, some of the, uh, I think some of the ideas were, you know, like what we think about when we think of artificial intelligence in terms of, is it something that we fear or something that, you know, somebody's going to take over because it's, it's got to be smarter than us? And it's not really about that so much in schools as it is the tools that are available. And there's many, many, it's just amazing how much, um, stuff is out there and so quickly is evolving. And, uh, kids are sometimes using it, sometimes not, and it gets into the line of, uh, well, I think generally speaking, you have to kind of give credit if you used it. Uh, or no, cite how it was used. So it's not like we can't use it, but give credit where, or how it was used. And we also have to be aware of the, of biases that are built into some of these algorithms that are behind some of these tools. And that's what I've learned attending that one session. And I also was part of an interesting, um, book discussion at Franklin Public Library. We, we read different books on artificial intelligence and had a book discussion on that. Felt very interesting. So that's it. I'm sure there'll be more coming. At this time, no policy, but we'll be seeing how that evolves, seeing what teachers think. I don't know if you want to add anything.
No, nothing to add. I mean, you summarized it well. Um, something I think that the board should know is it's kind of a wide open thing. And a lot of those, um, software's platforms, websites have rules about the age of kids that can use them. So it's kind of a never ending backend battle to make sure kids aren't getting to things that they can't use. So that's why we're working on getting some feedback, like parameters from teachers. Yes, we want to use it, but we're also responsible then on our district devices that they're not using things that they're not. So you've probably heard this with books. One of the problems at middle school is it's a lot of times age thirteen, which is right in the middle, or age twelve, right in the middle of middle school. So, um, we're trying to get a lot of, our teachers have been great. High school people have different concerns to middle school people, to elementary school people, which is kind of nice to hear from them. So more to come.
Thank you. Anybody else? So, uh, school and community engagement reports. Uh, Mrs. Bennon and I and, uh, Nick Kent from PRA went, uh, were invited by the, uh, city to, uh, for informational purposes to talk about, um, the referendum. We appreciate, um, the growing, uh, relationship with the city and what that entails. And, uh, the alderman and the mayor had, had, uh, good questions. Um, I don't know if you want to add anything.
No, I thought it was a good opportunity to just present information and like you said, a lot of the older people had questions or, um, could offer clarity. And it was a good opportunity to also talk about the upcoming, upcoming community sessions, uh, so people can get into the high school in particular and see it and see some pictures of the maintenance across the other buildings.
Anybody else? All right, future agenda items. Uh, Friends of Franklin, Forest Park School presentation. Spring twenty twenty five, early college credit and start college now request approvals. Twenty four, twenty five staffing update and twenty four, twenty five budget and tax levy approval. Theater pathway and teacher pathway, new courses. Policies fifty four ten, use of physical force and sixty three twenty, open enrollment action, uh, will be taken. District administrator goal setting closed session, uh, Southwood Glen School presentation, annual health report and twenty five, twenty six school calendar and the at risk report. And I thought we said so, oh, board goal discussion. So I was going to add, and then it popped up at the bottom. Um, I'm looking for motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Mrs. Sapursky. All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. We are adjourned at seven oh three.